Colin James, Rockingham.
Deborah Wright, Rockingham.
And for the things that went down this way, it was a take one and pass it on. So a child came through.
Let us also note that Superintendent Schools Chris Kibbe is passing out documents. And Edie Cole, who is the business manager, was just passing out documents. You saw a couple of ships passing.
All these papers.
I know.
That's okay.
Do we have any adjustments?
Good morning.
Not sure what we can give very brief report thing. So we don't. Yeah, we don't really have a report.
Okay, review and approve board minutes of December 11. When has had a chance to review those minutes? Are there any corrections? Hearing that I will declare the December 11 to be accepted as presented. Communication and public comment.
Mr. Here.
Yes, sir.
Just as a note, members in attendance, does not seem to include me, which is interesting since I spoke several times, probably longer than I should have. It's a small thing. I'll try not to take it personally.
Note that correction. Thanks, Charles. Policies, we have policy work tonight?
Nope.
Reports. I understand we don't really have much.
Not really. I'll just mention, I believe I uploaded into the folder for this meeting, the integrated field report from the state. That's really for another meeting, but.
Yeah, there it is.
That's kind of it. Oh, the other thing, since we're just going to mush right through this whole section is, the SU meeting is on the 24th. And I'm going to bring forward a candidate for the director of student services position for the year. So I hope folks can be there for that.
Deb?
Yes.
That does not work for me. I have a superintendent hiring committee meeting.
Okay. In that case, Don would be looking for an alternate for the SU meeting on the 24th. Molly has a commitment with regard to superintendent search.
24th? Yeah, I should be able to block that one out.
Okay. Thank you.
With those two items in mind, I just want to note that the superintendent search committee has at least in its one meeting met in the conference room at the WAASU. So we just need to do some flicking.
Yeah, I think you're going to meet in the community room of the middle school. Yeah, we're done with that today.
Any reportage, informal or otherwise, from the principal or assistant principal?
So it actually is informal, but will be helpful for me. I can seek a little feedback, not now, but you can send me an email. Should we have a meeting on the 22nd of January? We are intending a guidance presentation. We have previous templates to follow, and that is kind of previous priorities to speak to from other meetings that we've had. And some of you have been here for those and some of you haven't. But if there are particular topics you'd like to hear some information about from the guidance department, the sooner you can get that to me, the sooner we can fold that in. I will tell you, a good amount of time will be devoted to progress on PLPs, personalized learning plans, and flexible pathways works, which includes work-based learning sorts of things. All of that stuff, we brought a new person in and kind of here's how it's going on those new initiatives that have come down from the state. So that stuff, we're going to speak to in a reasonable amount of detail. There will also be the general coverage of what happens in guidance and how do those things go. So the general how goes it, but if there is something specific that you would like to hear about, you get those to us and we can get them to factor that stuff in.
Just a general comment to our viewing audience. The high school board and the guidance department have had ongoing dialogue now for several years. I think it's been extremely useful for.
That's all I got.
Okay. This is management for right now. Let's talk about the budget. Do we want to go into budget report or just skip down to discussion and action for that?
Well, you've got it right there on 7A.
Yes. Okay. Unfinished business for discussion and action, the budget discussion.
So what you have before you. Budget as last nodded at by the budget committee. Revenue assessments are now in there. The revenue sheet is completed. We also now have the tax estimate sheet. This budget raised education spending previously for about 6.5%. See at the bottom of your tax sheet where it's line 6, tax sheet. Tax rates work out, we believe, for the teaching of four towns. At the top of the tax sheet, the property dollar equivalent yield is set at $9,842. You can see that that is very tough. And that would be an amount that would close the $80 million hole in the education fund that was created last, was filled last year with one-time money. This year, it's not, how it's been filled. But this figure would do it. It would raise enough taxes to cover that hole. Now, the governor has said he doesn't want to do it that way, but I haven't heard how he plans to do it either. I don't know if he's for anything more recent than I have. He doesn't like it, but I didn't have a plan for not doing that. So the bottom line on these tax increases, they basically cook in this nine cents, which is what the $80 million hole is to at the state level. So the tax rates, when you look at, for example, Athens, which is actually going up a penny if it wasn't for the, that added nine cents, it would be going down quite a bit. Anyway, you can see for your town how that works out. Brafton is kind of taking the bigger hit of the four towns.
And this is prior to the CLA in each of the towns.
Right.
CLA?
The common level of appraisal in each of the towns will either lower or raise that tax rate.
And can we have a brief definition of the common level appraisal, please, Edie?
Yeah, they look at the properties that have sold in each of the towns to determine whether the houses are appraised at fair market value, above fair market value, or below. And then they equalize it so that it comes out to 100% or fair market value by either raising or lowering the appraisal as far as the taxes go. So your common level of appraisal, if all of your houses are selling, you know, either more or less, the CLA will adjust it so you're, you appear to be at fair market value with an equalized tax rate. So these numbers here are the share of the school's tax rate of the high school, but once you put it on to the town tax sheets, it's then adjusted by the common level of appraisal. So that will adjust these, and in most cases, it'll be helpful.
Thank you for a good explanation to a very complex concept.
You're welcome.
Great, continue, sir. Well, running down here, I don't know if Jack wants to talk about the budget itself as the committee chair, whether he was prepared to.
Or the whatever. Sure. Going through the budget, there was consensus about supporting it from the, at least seemed to be, consensus about supporting the budgets being proposed before you. The, you know, among the drivers of this, a lot of them were coming out of things such as food service and special ed impact, which really are decisions made at the SU level, decisions I happen to support, because we're making a change in our food service programming or anticipate making a change. And we knew that the food service program that we had was not, was, didn't seem sustainable based on the fact that we more or less achieved what we had in prior years over the objections of the food service vendor. So I think that we need to recognize that. The only other major change, as I recall from my notes, was the guidance decision that we had all agreed was necessary to make an add there. And then everything else is the fact that we've had a contract, we've had insurance changes, we've had the change courtesy of the governor, and there you are. It boils down to something fairly simple and straightforward. We're not making a change in services. We're not reducing the number of teachers available to teach math or English. This is what it costs to run the program that we've had in place here. And since it's a program that's been recognized as a, as a comparatively high-quality program in a state that's known for high-quality programs, if people want that program, this is what it costs.
Bearing in mind that we're under a discussion of budget, are there additional questions or comments? Did I see a hand up? Am I right on the side of the table?
No, but you're left.
Oh, Colin.
So Jack, there's no, I mean, I wasn't part of the budget committee, obviously. So, I mean, there was no significant, real, major changes that would be highlighted here?
The highlighted changes, again, the food service is a non-trivial change. We are, we're making a significant upgrade in that program, or at least we're budgeting for it because we're talking about building our own food service program for the supervised reunion. And we are, we tried, we looked at a range of estimates, which unfortunately are still not as mature as I'd like, but they're what we had to work with. And we picked in the middle of that range because the most important thing to try to do was not to give taxpayers in the following years a very unpleasant surprise if we were off by six figures in terms of what it costs. Hoping that the number we picked is on the high side, but I really don't know that. This is the most reasonable estimate we could on a very wide range of possible cost estimates. And that's an item. The other one is that we are having, there is upward pressure on special ed. If you've sat in any of the SU meetings, you know that. And that budget is something where we don't have a lot of discretion. And frankly, people at the SU don't have a lot of discretion. It's not really a controllable cost in any practical way. So when we add those things, you know, we could make an argument about whether or not the decision that we had made as a board to support an additional guidance person, whether the timing of that was ideal, but we saw it as a real need. We had agreed as a board that it was a real need, and so it's incorporated in the budget. That's really the only significant staffing change when.
It's not changed this year.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's anticipated, right?
It's already in place.
It's already baked in this, I'm sorry.
The conversation at the budget committee was that if we needed to find wiggle room, that would be what we discussed, but we still feel like that that's a really valuable change that was made and is bearing fruit for us already.
I'm just saying it's baked into this. But if I wasn't clear, that's, thank you for helping me make it clear.
One of the really, if you look at the Fund 100, which is up about $224,000, one of the biggest drivers of that is actually kids with 504 services or outside placements who are in regular education. That section is up about $160,000, just on two items. It's on the first page of your budget. So, yeah, unfortunately, we're also, we are serving a pretty high-needs population. We just feel it's responsible to actually really try to budget for what we think these costs are. We have problems tracking them from year to year. It is difficult, and I think last year.
Last year, we undershot significantly, and that's why we are looking to not do that again. While we still ended up with a surplus last year, usually through solid management of the budget, we're able to have a more significant surplus than we had last year. So last year, we had a, this last year, we're folding over a surplus of about $25,000. That's about $100,000 shy of what we did before. That's also, from a tax rate perspective, a significant upward pressure.
I was going to say, I remember in past years, we had, we had floated, we had floated on the, of the range of possibilities, a little bit on the high side. Didn't last year, knowing that there was, that there would be an impact. The, I guess the point I'm trying to make with this, and correct me again, because I'm sitting on this largely from the outside, is things like 504 costs, things like special ed costs, we can talk about them, we can complain about them, you know, why not? But really, to a large extent, it's not a cost that school board members, you know, if we assigned a different number to that, it doesn't change what it's going to cost us one dime. And so the reality is we're spectators to a large extent on those costs. We have to be confident that you and the team here will do your best. Beyond that, there's nothing we can do about it besides perhaps complain a lot. And it's essentially a baked-in number.
Chair is going to query Superintendent Schools. Is this so-called 504 the same thing as special ed? And if it's not the same thing as special ed, what differentiates it from special ed?
It's not, it, section 504 is a part of the Americans with Disabilities Act, so it does refer to section 504 of the ADA. But it's, a 504 plan is a plan for a student to succeed in the school setting that is short of an individualized education plan.
Which is special ed?
Which is special ed, which IEP is how that's referred to. So there are many more of these costs than there used to be 10 or 15 years ago. We both, Chris and I, both remember it as just a budding cottage industry.
Exactly.
From 20 years ago, but over time, it has blossomed in as we encounter kids that sometimes are in need of an outside placement, but they're not special ed. But if they have a disability, they don't qualify for special education. That's quite a complicated process. And so those kids can, they hit regular ed 100%, so they're tough, and they hit your local budgets. So those are tough costs to swallow. Special ed costs are reimbursed by the state, and they're also consolidated at the SU level so that the costs for special ed are actually kind of mellowed out over the years.
Let me just also add some, a reflective piece for board members. If we go back a number of years, 10, 15, maybe more, there was a time where the scrutiny from the AOE level on qualifying for an IEP was significantly less than it is now. So the disability, and that's the commonality between a student who qualifies for an IEP as opposed to a student who's on a 504, there's a disability that exists. I'll just go out and say, 15 years ago, a number of those students who were on 504s would have been most likely on IEPs, but because of the scrutiny that goes along with that and the dollar reimbursements that go along with that, the state has, number one, scrutinized more significantly and really even adjusted the qualification process for an IEP relative to many years ago. So that's one place where that student need still exists, but the cost for it is now being borne much more by regular ed than by special ed. The other thing where there is a significantly higher level of scrutiny is the specific services provided to IEP students. Again, I'm going to maybe overgeneralize, but I don't feel like I am. If a student wasn't on IEP 15 years ago, pretty much everything that was spent on that kid would most likely fall into a reimbursable through special ed category. Now they literally break it down, service by service, and if it can't be clearly tied to the IEP need, then that expense goes to regular ed. So in this day and age, there's even more regular ed money spent on students on IEPs because, I'll give a very simple example. If their disability is in math, things related to English provided to the students would now get paid for out of regular ed. So that is a distinct difference in, but from past to now, and that makes those costs go up.
And I would add that we used to get periodically audited by the agency and penalized for these non-eligible costs. And one of the things that Edie and Sharon have brought to the district is that we self-regulate what needs to be disqualified for special ed reimbursement. And so that's what's part of what's hitting your regular budget here when you look at some of these regular ed costs that we've already said, no, that is, that's not going to qualify, that needs to be at a regular ed. So I guess the good news is we don't have the every three-year, oh my God, you know, here's a huge bunch of costs that are, the state isn't going to give us money for because we're doing it upfront, but it doesn't make it much fun.
One more question, please, for administration. The implication here is that we have significant populations which are both accessing IEPs and 504s. Can you give us sort of a broad sense of just how large those populations are?
So special ed generally runs us about 20%. I don't have that number immediately available, and we probably have 10 to 15% on a 504.
I don't know, you were, on your written updates, you were keeping track of that.
I was, yes.
That we're the last one of the six.
I will note from my long historical perspective that those numbers tend to seem to be fairly consistent over time.
That I would agree with, yes.
As a combined population.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So as IEPs have come down, you don't automatically go to a 504, but those numbers, you know, the numbers of 504s will tend to go up, but you're right. Overall, that kind of total number is fairly consistent percentage-wise.
Yes, Don?
We never clarified for our audience that the IEP is individual educational program. I don't remember. Plan, okay. All right, so the individual educational plan is part of special education. And then you said that the student needing help in math, that would be an IEP, but that same student may not need help in English, but that student would not be mainstreamed in English.
Well, again, I, we're now getting a little more deeper into the weeds than I intended to, but, but right, I mean, that, well, no, the student would likely have regular ed, that scenario, wasn't a great scenario, but that scenario, yeah, that student would most likely be in a regular ed English class.
Yeah, to be a little, yeah, you're kind of far out there. So where it has happened that we have been billed for some significant amounts of regular ed for special ed students is when kids are at a placement such as priority placements, which is one of the placements that we use. They're not a school, they're a placement. They can only, we can only get reimbursed for the costs for the services on a kid's IEP there. But during lunch and during the subjects that they're not, you know, receiving assistance where we don't, and we get billed back.
Much better example.
That, that is, has been a pretty heavy hit, actually, in the last couple of years. And we're working on tracking that better and estimating what those costs are going to be, although they vary for every kid, as you can imagine, because every kid has different IEP and different services.
So then the 504 is what, the remedial class of?
Not necessarily. It can be, a 504 could be as simple as, I don't even know if you do this anymore, it used to be preferential seating in a classroom. You probably wouldn't do that anymore, because you could just do that. They can be quite simple, or they can be very extensive. The kid needs, you know, cannot succeed in the regular class school and needs to be in a completely separate placement. So there's a wide range of 504 plan.
I recognize Jack, let me go across the table and call him. Go ahead, Jack.
Bring this back to where, what the subject is, which is budget, and the question becomes one of what can, what can boards do realistically to have any input on 504, for that matter, special ed costs? I think the 504 versus special ed, I mean, is there guidance? Is there anything that we can do?
There is something you can do. You can make sure that your administration has an effectively functioning multi-tier You can make sure that your administration has an effectively functioning multi-tiered system of support. So that really effective, and the, and that refers to the whole system of educational support. So you have a really effective general education class and classes and services where most of your kids are being serviced all the time. Only occasionally are their kids moving up into these upper tiers where they need more intensive services. So that, as a board, you should be asking your administrators whether, how is that working? What's it look like, you know?
But I'll even add to that.
That is your role.
You know, we are running into, and I've said this to the board before, students with more and more significant mental health concerns. The more we can intervene in whatever way we can, early when things start to become problematic, I'm a firm believer that, you know, those kinds of supports can help students manage better here and not let things snowball. So again, getting back to the money that the board authorized last year for that additional guidance counselor, I just want to remind you, a big part of that was about these initiatives that have come down from Montpelier. But another big part of that was to have additional support for students when things start to come unraveled, before they become really unraveled. And that is money that might keep money from being spent further down the line. So that's another.
Thank you, Chris. Colin.
I was just wondering if we could generally kind of go back to, we're kind of like branching off into subjects that are very significant and very important. But I'm just wondering if the committee wants to like, kind of go down and like, highlight like, what they really went over this year and kind of pinpoint like, what we need to kind of be focusing on? Because members of the community are asking me, you know, are we going up? Is it a significant increase? Is it a decrease? What really is the overall school budget? If we could kind of like, go over that, that would be wonderful.
That's a, that's a, that's a great question. It does bring us back to the topic.
With all due respect.
I want to get one last word here on this, and I've said it before. Schools are the primary social services safety network of the population between roughly ages of three, twenty-one years. By the way, we also have schools that social service, if you will, is becoming increasingly a significant driver of our budget.
Absolutely.
Your question and your timing are well taken, Colin. So I'm, I'm wondering if we want to, uh, actually discuss the budget a little bit further? Or whether you want to, uh, put a motion on the floor to, um, adopt a proposed budget? And then discuss it further? Is there strong preference one way or the other? Jack.
I think for Robert's rules purposes, we should put a motion on the floor to adopt this budget. And I will move that, uh, this budget be adopted as recommended.
And I, and I presume that you're proposing to adopt a budget of six million, six hundred eighty, six hundred eighty-four thousand, seventy-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents?
I believe that's the number. I'll, I'll ask for correction if I'm wrong in that, my superintendent.
And that is the, and that is the amount that you believe, uh, the school board has determined to be necessary for ensuing fiscal year?
Well, well said, and I'll assume that I must have said it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to adopt a budget of six million, six hundred eighty-four thousand, seventy-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Discussion. Let's go back to your question, Colin.
I'm sorry.
I said, let's go back to your question. We have a motion on the floor to, to discuss the budget, Chris.
Well, I just wanted to speak to his question.
Yep, yep.
And, um, so Colin, I don't want to be oversimplify or redundant, but the piece that Chris said relative to taxes, that's an important point for board members to take away, particularly around education spending. And the stuff that Jack said about what are the increasing driving forces, that's also the important, I mean, other than going line by line through the budget, which we did at a budget committee level and.
Multiple times.
Right.
I do, I do want people to know there was not a quarter in this budget that didn't at least get circled at one point.
Are the upward moving parts are, um, certain things from the WNESU, most significantly are special ed increases and the, um, tackling of the food service. The other upward pressure, a significant upward pressure are, um, regular ed costs for students with disabilities, whether that's the regular ed part of someone's IEP or for costs related to 504 plans. Obviously, there are the absorption of salary increases because there is a master agreement that we're working from this year. And every year, we don't always have that, but that's folded in. And again, a significant upward driving force is the lack of a hundred thousand dollars' worth of surplus, which was in last year and is not in this year. So that would be kind of the Reader's Digest condensed version of upward driving force.
Thank you. And that was my point, is to get that kind of out on the floor, because it was said, but maybe I misinterpreted it a different way. So, my apologies.
That's a great question. I don't think it, a bit, to go background.
I just wasn't part of the committee, so I just kind of get an understanding.
Voters in the four communities, um, support this budget if in their judgment it is appropriate. This board obviously believes it's appropriate. Nice, Colin. Yes, Molly.
One other question. Chris Kibbe, you said something about the nine cent that the government's trying to, can you just, I know someone's gonna ask us what that means. And I don't know if it's a simple answer or not, but.
So last year, um, to find money to fund the ed fund, the legislature used about eighty million dollars in some one-time money that I guess was found on a back shelf somewhere. I'm kind of kidding. It, it was, actually some extra special ed money that had been anticipated to be needed, but wasn't. So yes, special ed consolidation does save money. That's the side. Anyway, they use that money rather than increasing the, or decreasing the dollar yield figure to raise more, uh, through the formula. And that, so that let them keep the dollar yield figure higher. It kept everybody's taxes lower. The problem in doing that, of course, is it's a one-time money. It's a lot like using surplus money one year and the next year you don't have it. And all of a sudden, you gotta fill the hole. So each, uh, I think it's in November, the tax commissioner sends us out a letter and says this is what you should probably use for the dollar yield figure. And this year, the tax commissioner sent out a figure that was low intentionally so that it would fill in the education fund and fully fund it, uh, to the, with the eighty thousand dollars. In effect, what this does is it pushes up taxes statewide, ed taxes statewide, seven to ten cents, depending upon, on the level of appraisal. So I'm, I'm sure it's, that wasn't as simple an answer as.
No, Dan Axel is the only one that ever makes sense of this paper, but, um, it does, I, I understand enough to.
Yeah. Well, there's some really clever things about the formula for, for taxes. I mean, it really, it does what the state needs it to do. If they need to raise more money, they can drop this dollar yield figure.
Yes, Mr. Pryor.
I, I think it's really important, uh, for all that to understand, when we talk about drivers, again, we're talking about the drivers not of the total cost of education. Talking to drivers of our share of that total education budget. And with these types of things, would affect our budget negatively, whether it was level funded in terms of total cost or not. Uh, this is, this is, what we're talking about is essentially the old three, you know, the old thing with the ball and the three cups and where the ball's landing. And what's happened here is a ball's been put into our hole, into our cup, as opposed to the state's cup. It doesn't reflect some wild expenditure on the locality's part. It's basically a bureaucratic shift of the, of the dollar cost to the locality and to the local taxpayer. It's part of a process that's been going on for kind of a while. It's the same with moving money from a special ed category where the state pays for it to, it's been accompanied by a lot of wanting for nearly ten years, to increasingly putting into 504. The real difference in many ways is that, one, the state pays a large percentage of it and in a 504, your local community gets stuck with the bill. And these types of costs are more significant drivers of what you see on your property tax bill than anything we're doing. And it's really important for people to know that.
I would, I would say if you're looking for a smoking pistol, certainly one of those smoking pistols was the budget deal that took place over the summer when the legislature agreed to the governor's demand to reduce the statewide property tax by two cent. That two-cent reduction became an instant local deficit for the communities in Vermont.
Just all it is, is just simply shift, there is no savings in these types of things. This is, this is a game. It's called, who can we stick? Now, there's nobody below the locality that we can shift the bill on to. If there was, maybe we'd attempt it. But the fact of the matter is that we're, you know, we're, that your local community is at the receiving end. What you're really seeing here is a gradual slouching back to pre-Brigham days when there was unequal education because everything was, uh, was, uh, in the responsibility of your localities, whether they had any money or whether they didn't. And this is part of that process. And at some point, somebody's gonna need to, uh, remind folks as these numbers start to drop below what they are in our other five New England states, there's a problem here.
I will remind the board that we're under discussion of a motion to adopt a, um, budget of six million, six hundred eighty-four thousand, seventy-eight dollars, eighty-eight cents for, uh, the maintenance of the Union High School, uh, for fiscal year, uh, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Is there further discussion on the motion? Deb.
Just as I said at the, um, the SU level, I am concerned about the, um, the government's request, governor's request to reduce the number of pairs that schools use, that he is asking to be heated, but we have chosen not to. And I was also concerned about the risk we're taking with changing our food program. I agree, our food program in the current state is bad and it needs to change. But I do believe more thought should have been put into it. Perhaps we should have gone the middle ground because we're going all in. And that money might, it might be a risk that you might not get students to use that program and therefore you won't, we won't be financially viable, um, at the end of the year. Possibly, but I'm still concerned and thought that we should have reduced the budget for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Devin, your observations, I think, are duly noted and they're important ones to make. So thanks for making them. Okay, we're, uh, under discussion of a motion to adopt a, uh, budget for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Check, it's in the numbers. Yes, there's still six million, six hundred eighty-four thousand, seventy-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Further discussion before we get to a vote? Okay, then all those in favor of the motion to adopt, uh, a budget, please say aye.
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 Is anybody opposed? Okay, Deb was opposed, or have any abstentions, Kristen? Okay, and Kristen and Jack are.
I don't understand any, because I think that bringing this, this is like, uh, I'm making the recommendations to the board, but I'm, but I think it's the board's choice to make, make a decision. And it's not one I feel that, uh, in that position I should, uh, be anything but providing it to you for your judgment.
We have, we have eight members at the table. We have, uh, I, we have counted five votes that support this budget. We have one vote opposed. I think that was respectful opposition. It's great. And we have, uh, two abstentions and the chair did not vote.
But it still passes.
For argument. And, uh, the, um, budget is passed and we have adopted a budget for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. And thank everyone for, uh, their hard work and thoughtful discussion. Okay, so let's keep going here. Approve the warning articles. Everybody has copies of the, uh, warning articles? For the sake of discussion, let's get a motion out here to, uh, approve the articles and see where we go. The motion, it's called, you want to give the motion on the articles? The motion to, uh, approve the warning articles? And.
Yes. It's kind of hard to hear when we're having the hovering spaceship in the background. Sorry, forgive me.
It's arrived.
We approved the warning articles. We're under discussion. Discussion under the motion, please. Can we get a brief explanation possibly what these warning articles do?
They're what you will act on at the annual meeting, which will be on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, right here in the auditorium. And they're just about as simple as can be this year. There's just the, uh, the regular positions. And Don Capincelli, remember, you're the new moderator? We have to kind of dig that out of our memories for.
Yeah, no, I remember, I remembered it.
Fortunately, David did too. But the only, uh, Article Five is the article that's voted, printed on the Australian ballot and voted in each of the four towns. The other articles are acted upon at the annual meeting.
And just a, just a reminder that the Union High School annual meeting is very much a public meeting and we're hopeful of having, um, significant, uh, public participation. Has they taken this year, would you like to see it? And, uh, Colin's motion is to approve these warning articles. Any further discussion before we get to a vote? Okay, all those, yes, Chris?
Oh, I just have a quick question, please. Is the wording of Article Five kind of exactly the same, but the number's different than it was last year?
Yep. The wording of Article Five is statutorily required.
Yes, Colin.
I just have one quick question. I can't remember in the past whether or not we have, have we put these articles like in the local newspaper? Or have we?
They're required.
They are, so they're Eagle, Bradaburrow, like Town Crier, excuse me, Shopper. There's no such thing as Town Crier anymore, but.
They're published in the Ref.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to.
Or your paper, right, I guess.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, because.
But, and then we publish the book ourselves.
Yes.
Do we put this up on our website? Oh, I gotta go get it. I just think it, you know, this is, this is, uh, websites are kind of the equivalent of the old Town Crier posting bulletin board to some extent. And it would make, it'd be, I think, I would probably put it under the Bellaswells Union High School Board. But put it as a separate, rather than putting it into a folder. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, uh, further discussion under the motion to approve the warning articles?
Why?
Right then, all in favor of approving the, uh, warning articles, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, what did I say? Abstention, Kristen's abstent, abstention is duly noted. Gosh. Hey, review the annual report information.
No, we don't really have any of that here.
Let's pass over it then.
Let's pass over.
Okay.
Let's approve an announced tuition rate. Do we have one here, announced tuition rate?
Yeah, I handed it out. It's got yellow, blue, and green at the bottom.
Yellow is what we're trying to approve?
Yes.
We want to approve one or the other one, never.
We approved the tuition rate of shooting at seventeen thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifteen cents.
Okay, we have, uh, a motion from Molly to, uh, approve an announced tuition rate of seventeen thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Discussion, are you, and look at Jack.
Can we drop the fifteen cents? That's the exact amount. That's the exact amount, but the agency of education likes us to round.
Perfect. The maker of the motion is, are you willing to accept that?
Thank you.
I guess I just have a question. Why the tuition rate is 17,397 minus the 15 cents? And, and Article 5 is 17,193.80. Is that up here somewhere too?
Right, because there are things that are excluded like driver's ed, food service, special ed, transportation.
Which goes with this number but not that number.
Yeah, yeah. The reason is tuition students are usually transported not on our buses. And driver's ed is optional. Not all kids that are tuitioned in take driver's ed. Food service is optional. They may bring their own lunch. They may have no need for special ed or for technical ed. So the way the formula works, it's basically to take the total cost of the budget and remove everything except just regular instruction.
Excellent question.
It says FY19 on here, and that's FY19 in the article.
Correct.
So just Kristen's saying it's a different year.
Yep, you're right.
So it's the same year. So that's the reason why it's a couple hundred dollars different.
I've got 20 in my brain from earlier today.
It's okay. It's that 15 cents, I got you.
I think we all do.
Yeah, okay.
Jack?
As I do every year in the full expectation of being roundly defeated, I, I, I always said that one of the questions about having a tuition rate at this height is we're talking about, what is the additional cost per student? And this is not an additional cost per student. This is, this is a share of the total figure. That we were going to pay for this building, whether there's 100 students in it or 900, you know, 500 students in it, it's not an additional cost. We have a lot of classes here where it would really be nice if we had two or three more students in them. It's not an additional cost to bring someone in. And I continue to wonder whether or not we're missing potential attendees at this school from New Hampshire, from wherever, that might come here in preference to someplace else if the number was less than $17,397 even. It just seems, you know, and you'll notice in the past, the approved numbers have been substantially less than that. This is a pretty fat number even compared to the state average. And I'm curious as to why that state average number wouldn't be a perfectly dandy number to put in if we're trying to compete with other, other possible receiving towns.
Superintendent Kibbe? You can approve any number you want. It only does matter. Doc?
Is our average daily membership down significantly from, from last year? Because a year ago, we were able to have the same formula. We came up with a $14,600 per student.
Well, no, actually, I think we'd have to review the minutes.
Did I do this to you last year?
What's that?
Did I do this to you last year to win for once?
I think you were successful, to be honest with you. I think that there are times where Jack's annual argument wins the day.
And it did last year.
Right, and so that's why it is where it is.
Okay, so, so 14.6 was the statewide average that you were.
No, 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 well, you came up with a different.
That was approved.
Right. A different number was chosen than, in this case, the number that was on the yellow line. I don't remember how you came up with that number, whether it was the state average, but that is lower than that amount. So Jack is actually successful on this on occasion.
Kristen, we're recognizing, I'm going to query Edie. Go, go ahead.
Oh, I just was going to ask, it says that this is what you're recommending. So what is the, what, so if you could explain why? Or does Jack's argument make sense?
Right, so now I'm going to ask Edie a quick question to confirm something here. The number that we set is a number we can't go over.
Correct.
So.
You can always go under.
Exactly. So for example, and this is why a high number can be okay, except what it advertises to the world.
Right.
If someone wants to shop around, the number they would come up with is 17,397, even though if you as a board wanted to, you could say, you know what? We'll take 15,000, that's better. So you can charge less, you can't charge more. So it's recommended because it's the number that.
We believe it's accurate.
Yeah.
The other point I think that's important, now, we do have a few tuition students.
Yep.
And if I, I believe I am correct in saying that every one of them has, I don't want to call it choice, but well, choice in grades nine through 12 in their own town.
That's right.
So all of their towns are paying the tuition. It's not a matter of shopping. The parents don't care. They just have choice. They, and their town's going to pay for it.
And their town sends us the money for that.
Right, so.
It won't make a difference. We're not going to get one more student if we're at 15 as opposed to 17.
That is my belief.
Then what's the point?
Okay.
Molly?
Do they, when, when an out-of-town kid pays?
Yep.
Do they pay just the state rate? Or do they pay what we're approving here?
They pay what you set the, announce the rate at.
And this doesn't necessarily mean.
They don't, their town is.
Right, I understand.
That we're, we're, I thought money didn't necessarily follow the student.
There are no apples and oranges.
Okay.
That's a different law.
If a town doesn't run a high school in Vermont, it is fairly common, although there's not a lot of them, where the town's decision is tuition to wherever the family wants to send them. So that's.
And that's why we get students from Vernon and we get students from Weathersfield.
Right, right.
They're the two closest towns. Yes, Cindy?
When people are looking to change and go somewhere different, they don't look at the price.
That's right.
It has nothing to do with them. They're looking at what the school offers to their child.
Right.
In all aspects. That's why they would choose us.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to adopt a tuition rate per student of $17,397. I have not heard an amendment to that being offered. Is an amendment being offered? Okay, well then, let's go to the motion. Any further discussion before we vote? All right then, all in favor of setting the tuition rate at $17,397, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Understanding. Okay, Jack is opposed. All right. There has to be a point. Directors, members, would you like to start us off, Devin?
I have none, sorry.
Colin?
Just a happy new year to everybody and look forward to working with you for the rest of the year.
I, I know there's a couple. Chris, can you help me out with, we're celebrating the banners and jackets being delivered for some of us.
Yeah, and I don't have those dates for you, and I apologize for that, but yes.
I know field hockey's is January 23rd, but I think the girls' track team is first.
That's right. But we'll make sure we get that on the website.
I'll just let people know they're between JV and varsity basketball games, and you can check it on the website. It's nice to see it.
Thank you, Cindy. Brenda?
Brenda Parkes, I want to thank you for viewing this and for the concerns that come up and the opportunity to address them.
Well, we try to do a good job.
John has one of those dates, by the way, which is.
I believe on Thursday, we're doing the track and field banner at the boys' home basketball game. So that's Thursday, the 11th.
Girls and boys?
January.
Track, I believe we'll be doing both.
Both.
When we do track.
Both girls and boys, yeah.
Doc?
Nothing tonight.
Jack?
Just want to thank the other members of the budget committee or the high school. This is one of the more tedious jobs we do every year. It's one that I think is one of the more challenging things that we do. Budgets drive policies oftentimes more than the other way around. People on the budget committee were aware of that, and I really want to thank them for their attention and the things, the questions they raised and their support throughout the process.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, data next meeting, January 22nd. And we're talking about guidance. 6:30 here, 6:30, okay.
6:30?
Seeing the other business that comes before this board, I'll declare it's adjourned at 7:34.